Recording.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mrs. Matson, you've got our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everybody. The first thing I'd like to do is welcome our new school committee members. We have three new members with us this evening. So I would like to introduce them first, and then I'll go through everybody who else who's on the call. I'm just making note of, Mrs. Parker just joined us, and here comes Mr. Marks. So our three new members, I'd like to welcome you, and thank you for stepping up to run for office. And we look forward to your continued participation on the committee. So tonight, we have with us our new members is Bobby French. We have Justice Graves, and we have Jennifer Smith. And then we have our members who have been on the committees to date, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Matson, Mr. Mason, Mr. Marks, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. And then also on the call this evening, we have Superintendent Dr. Kazivan. We have our Assistant Superintendent Kate Kalis, our Business Manager, Mrs. Geister, our Administrative Assistant extraordinaire, Mrs. Varney. We also have Mr. Ivan and Mrs. Parker from the NDEA. And I see that Callie Whedle, our student rep, has just joined us as well. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome. We've got, I think, a pretty hefty agenda for tonight, so we'll get right on things. I do want to let everybody know that this meeting is being livestreamed tonight. We've provided the link for people to be able to view the meeting and listen in. And it's also being recorded, so once we're, we've completed the meeting, it'll get processed and then posted upon the district's YouTube website, so people can view it later on. All right. Tonight is our first meeting after the elections, and as per our policy, we have to reorganize our committee. So I'm just going to read quickly the policy that at the first regular meeting following the district's annual elections, they will elect from its membership a Chair, Vice Chair, and a Secretary, all of whom will hold their respective offices for a term of one year or until a successor is elected. We need to do this within 10 days, so it's going to the annual election. So the annual election was on Monday, we're two days out from that, so we were certainly within that timeframe. Until a new Chair is elected, the current Chair, which is myself, X, as the Chair of the meeting, until that happens. And what we'll do is we take nominations from the floor and a roll call vote to nominate for those positions. So the first reorganization of the committee would be nomination for Chair. So I would entertain a motion from someone to nominate someone as the Chair of the committee. Mrs. Matson?
I'd like to nominate Margaret Hughes for Chairman.
Second.
And I have a second by Mr. Marks. Are there any other nominations out there? Okay, seeing none, I'm humbled once again by your support, and I will gladly accept the nomination if the committee so votes me in. So without any questions or comments, then, we'll do a roll call vote. Let me just find my list of people. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, I will do it. And that was unanimous, so I thank you again, and I'm humbled by your trust in me to lead the committee, and I look forward to another year working together and moving the district forward. So with that being done, as your Chair for the year, I will continue as Chair for the rest of the meeting. Our next nomination will be for Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations on the floor for someone for Vice Chair?
I nominate King Mason
So Mrs. Robichaud has nominated Mr. Mason.
I second.
And Mr. Marks is seconded. Mr. Mason, would you be amenable to being Vice Chair if it moves forward?
Sure.
Okay, so I do have a first and a second to nominate Mr. Mason as Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations on the floor for Vice Chair? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote to nominate and appoint Mr. Mason as the Vice Chair of the School Committee. Mrs. Robichaud?
Hi.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
First, I was delighted to say thank you, Hank, and yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye as well. That was unanimous, so congratulations, Mr. Mason, for being Vice Chair for the committee for the year. And I look forward to working with you in that capacity. Next up, we have Secretary of the School Committee, which is an appointment by the committee. In the past, we have had Dr. Kazivan as the Secretary. It seems to work well because he is there onsite to do correspondence and other things. And unless there's any other nominations on the floor, I would accept a motion to appoint Dr. Kazivan as the Secretary of the School Committee again.
So moved.
Second.
And I have a second by, I think Mr. Mason might have been, Mr. Graves. So I do have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Dr. Kazivan as the Secretary of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Robichaud?
Hi.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous, so thank you, Dr. Kazivan, once again, for serving as the Secretary of our School Committee. Next up is the Assistant Secretary of the School Committee. And in the past, we have asked Mrs. Varney to fulfill this role. So unless there's another nomination on the floor, I would accept a motion to appoint Susan Varney as the Assistant Secretary of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks. Mr. Graves, will you have a second, then?
Second.
Okay, and I have a second from Mr. Graves. We all got to get the same internet speed. Are there any questions or comments on the appointment of Mrs. Varney as the Assistant Secretary? Seeing none, then we'll do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. So thank you, Mrs. Varney, for fulfilling the role of Assistant Secretary to the School Committee once again. Next up, we have our MASC delegate appointment. And this role is who represents us at the Delegate Assembly at the MASC Conference in November. I've typically fulfilled that in the past because I generally go to the meetings, and they used to do this like on Saturday, and nobody else wanted to stay. So I would be happy to do it again if no one else wants to, but if someone else would like to do it, I'm fine with that, but I'll throw it out there for someone to make a motion for our MASC delegate.
I make a motion that Margaret continues to do it. And it has, it has nothing to do with the Saturday, Margaret, it's that you do a great job.
So there's a motion, and do I have a second on the floor?
Second. Second.
A second, but I think Mrs. Robichaud. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Margaret Hughes, myself, as the MASC delegate at the MASC 2021 Delegate Summit, which will be held in November. Any questions or comments on that?
No.
Seeing none, we will do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so thank you. I'm happy to once again represent the district at the Delegate Summit, and obviously, more information will be coming forth once the MASC comes up with the various lobbying items that they want to bring in front of the Delegate Assembly, so that'll probably be towards the September, October timeframe, so. So next up is the Legal Representative Appointment. We have a policy, BJ, that says School Committee Legislative Program. We appoint someone to kind of keep in touch with the legislative items going around, keep the committee up to date. In the past, I've kind of served as that role because, one, I'm, as being the MASC delegate, I'm also on their legal subcommittee, so I have some information. I'm happy to do that again unless someone else would like to do that. So I will accept a nomination from someone for us to fill that role.
I make a motion for
I would like to motion, oh. I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion that Margaret Hughes serve as our Legislative Representative for the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second, and that was Justice with the motion, and Jeff with the second. I'm actually falling behind, I usually make note of who did those. Any questions or comments on that?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
And Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so I thank you once again, I'm happy to serve in that capacity. What I will say is if there is anyone, especially those new to the committee, who may have an interest in either the delegate or the legislative role going forward, I'm happy to have a conversation with you and transfer that, you know, come from the next year. So just let me know, I'm happy to give up responsibilities, I have no problem with that, so. All right, moving right along, then. Next up, I want to just bring up our subcommittees. We have various subcommittees, they are three-member subcommittees, and we, I, we have a listing of them. Since three of our members did leave, we have openings on existing subcommittees. And we, every year, we also discuss if anyone would like to be removed from a committee or change seats in a committee. What I will do, then, is I will send out the list of all of our subcommittees with a brief overview of what they are. And if you have an interest in being on any of them, you can just email me back and let me know which subcommittees you're interested in, and then I'll try and work through all of the interests and who's on what committee and fit people in. Typically, subcommittees meet either monthly, depending on what the content is. We may move to quarterly for certain meetings. I think like maybe Facilities is more of a quarterly meeting, or an ad hoc if need be. And maybe some of the other ones could even go to quarterly as we start to do our work. Typically, the subcommittees will kick in, you know, in the August, maybe September timeframe. So we've got a couple of months for people to really think about the time commitments involved with each of the committees. So I'll get that out within the next week or so, and everybody can have a chance to review. If you have any questions, feel free to email me back or reach out to Dr. Kazivan, since he is the lucky one who gets to attend almost every single subcommittee meeting, which he loves, loves his stuff. So he can also give you a good background on what the subcommittee works on and what they do and time commitment and things like that, so. We'll get that out to you shortly. Next up is we have our proposed, excuse me, FY22, although it's really the end of FY21 because we really start with this meeting, meeting calendar. On the agenda, I had just prepped a potential calendar of meetings based upon what our schedule has been. We have always met on the third Wednesday of the month. And that, the only change to that date would be if it falls within a school vacation week. So we would either move the meeting maybe up a week or back a week, so you might see a couple of adjustments. This past year, and I actually think it was partway through the year before, we added a second meeting that was kind of penciled in, but we did find we needed a lot of them, and that would be on the first Wednesday of the month, especially when we get to budget season. And of course, with the pandemic, we had a lot of business to discuss, and we did find we used a lot of them, and we kind of go with those. You know, keep them on the calendar, and when we meet for that third Wednesday, we'll decide if we really need that first Wednesday meeting. So there is the schedule out there, if you want to add it to the calendar. What you'll see is I had planned on just timing of things, and of course, I believe the new regulations being lifted May 29th could change this of being virtual through maybe August, but maybe we can get in person before then. What I did want to throw out to the committee is we started at 5:30 this evening. Is 5:30 a good time for everybody, or does anybody need that to start later for any reason? Okay, so we're going to try to stick with 5:30. And if at any point in time someone does have an issue with the 5:30 timeframe, you know, just let us know, and we can certainly adjust that going forward. We're going to continue working on a solution for us to meet in person and continue the livestream. And with the mandates being dropped at the end of the month, but we're still in an education setting, so there's, there's issues with bringing people in. If we can at least livestream us together, we'll try and do that. So I know I'll work with Mrs. Varney and Dr. Kazivan on trying to figure out how we're going to make that happen. And we'll hopefully get to that shortly, and I'll keep everybody apprised of that. Otherwise, we'll plan, our next meeting would be via Zoom, but we'll let you know if that changes. And speaking of the next meeting, initially, we had a June 2nd date for the next meeting. That's the first Wednesday of the month. Excuse me. I do know that there's a conflict with some senior events that week. And I wanted to just, you know, reach, you know, ask everybody. I believe that might be the awards and scholarship night at the same time, or at 6 o'clock, and we start at 5:30. And I wanted to just bring that up because I think it might behoove us to reschedule that meeting so that we don't interfere with the senior events, so that, I know Dr. Kazivan, you're definitely going to want to be there. I know that we still have to limit who can, who can come to some of these events. So the, normally, the whole school committee would be invited. I don't think that's going to be able to happen for some of these earlier events, but again, I know the high school's working on all sorts of logistics. So if nobody has an issue, I'd like to, we can either reschedule or cancel the meeting for June 2nd. The next meeting is June 16th, and I'm going to throw this over to Dr. Kazivan and ask if we've got pressing business that he thinks we're going to need to address prior to June 16th.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, I would, you know, in talking or listening to the Commissioner today, I think that slow and steady is what recommend, what he recommends in terms of the plan for SOR III, because as we talked about, we are going to start talking about the structures of that tonight. The, the actual plan is not due until October, and they'd like for us to use the summer months to, to, well, as much of it as we can to, to collect the folks who want to be part of some of these committees. So I don't think that by June 2nd, because I was, I was concerned that we would need to move a little quicker. So I don't, I don't think so, I guess it all depends on tonight, just based on a few things that we, obviously, we need to, just for the business of the day. So I think if we get through all of this, and I would look to Anne Marie and Kate and Susan, I don't believe in terms of the mandatory items, especially now that they've told us to kind of slow, slow down a bit on the, on the planning. I don't see any reason why we, just one more meeting should be enough.
Okay, so what we'll do is at the very end of the meeting, which has an item to say when the next meeting is, we'll just double back and make sure that we're good without needing it for anything that might have come up in between. But as of this point, it looks like we won't be meeting on June 2nd. The next meeting would be June 16th. We'll anticipate it being virtual unless we can figure out how to maybe do it for us in person, but plan on virtual right now, but we'll, we'll let everybody know if that changes, so. Yes.
You know, I just want to jump in real quick, too, with everything that we, actually, with everything we've done over the last year with the technology, the new technology and everything. And I believe we signed a policy last, I think it was last year that we actually signed it. So even though we do go in person, we still now have the capability to meet virtually if somebody couldn't make the, the live meeting as well, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We actually voted and passed the remote participation policy that you're referring to. You still need an in-person quorum, and there's a lot of stipulations around what qualifies you to not be there physically. What I do know, though, is that there's a lot of lobbying going on behind the scenes to look at the executive order and mandate that was put in place, see what may have worked and how we can carry some of those things forward. So it'll be interesting to see prior to, what is it, June 15th, when the executive order is rescinded, if the legislator is going to pass some changes to open meeting law. So we'll keep on top of that and maybe be able to take advantage. But I, but absolutely, we do have remote participation that we can handle if someone cannot be physically at the meeting.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, good, good bring up, Jeff, thank you. Okay, so we have taken care of all of our reorganization items, and we're down to regular business. We've got some meeting minutes to approve. I know they were attached to the agenda and forwarded out earlier, I think, prior to our new members joining. But hopefully, people have had a chance to look at those. So I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 5th, 2021, as written.
So.
I have a motion by Mrs. Matson, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Robichaud. Do I have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, I don't see any. I will just point out that if you were not at the meeting, you are still able to vote in favor of the minutes. You do not have to abstain, so just, because that always comes up as a question. I wasn't there, so abstain, you don't have to, you certainly can. But I did want to let, especially our three, three new members know that you certainly can vote in favor of the minutes if you have read them and feel that you think that they should be approved. So with that being said, and I didn't see any questions or comments, we will do a roll call vote. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Next up, we would need to approve the meeting minutes of May 11th, 2021. So I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 11th, 2021, as written.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Matson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Mason. Any questions, comments, or concerns on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud? Okay, I finally heard you, it came through with a little bit of delay. Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous, so the minutes from May 11th have been approved. Next up, I would entertain a motion to recommend accepting the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Matson, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mr. Graves. Any questions or comments? And I just want to point out that Lori has kindly volunteered to sign warrants going forward, so if you need to be away for any reason, if you just let the group know, we'll find someone to sign when you're away. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Hi.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that passed unanimously as well. Our next order of business is our student representative. So before we, we get to Callie, I just wanted just to thank both Callie and Abby Bennett and all of the other representatives who have popped in and out during the year. Callie is a senior this year, so I think this may be your last meeting, unless we can coerce you to come back in June and give us an update on how all your senior events went, but we'll, we'll keep that in our back pocket for now. But with that being said, I will turn it over to Callie to give us an update on the, the student representative side of things.
Evening, everyone. So since our last meeting, the Warrior Leadership Class has planned a Spirit Week for the entire school, which is taking place this week, with today being Blue and White Day, and tomorrow being Country versus Country Club. The students are very eager to participate and show off their school spirit after not having been able to do so the past year. And our student body has also been able to continue enjoying in-person lunches with their fellow clients, have had a lot of positive feedback about that. And as of right now, softball, baseball, and outdoor track have been competing for about three weeks, and we are all incredibly happy to finally be able to play our sports without having to wear masks as long as we're outside. And students are very grateful that they're back to what they want to be doing and they love doing. They're very excited for future possibilities. The senior class has a bittersweet outlook as we near the end of our school year and prepare for senior events. With award ceremonies, senior fun days, graduation, and a few other events quickly approaching, the senior class is eager to finally have fun and some normalcy. We're all looking forward to the end of the school year. Thank you.
Sorry, forgot to unmute myself, thank you, Callie. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Callie? Seeing none, again, I will just extend my personal thanks and on behalf of the committee and the administration for the wonderful job you and Abby and the others have done in bringing a student perspective to the school committee. And I look forward to you passing the torch to the next group that will join us for next year and wish you nothing but the best.
Having us.
All right, next up is public input. Mrs. Varney, did we receive any public input that needed to be read at this point in time?
We did not, but I just want to check my email quickly, just to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Going to read, there was a chat, Dawn, is it Benoit, Benoit, and I apologize. Benoit, okay, thank you, I just wasn't sure how to pronounce it. A comment early on in the meeting, you just said congratulations to the new members, so I wanted to pass that along. If there is anyone else on the public that is out there and wanted to make any comments or had any questions, feel free to type in that, in the chat box, and we'll keep an eye on that, and if time permits and it makes sense, we'll try to address them as they come forward. But I'll go back to Mrs. Varney, did you notice anything that came in at the last minute?
No, there was not.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the NDEA, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Ivan and Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to start by, by saying a warm thank you to our former school committee members, Deb Kozel and Rayanne Trifilo and Vicky Chardier. It's going to be so different without those faces present for how many years they served our school district and our students and did it so well. And before that had all have or had careers in education, it was literally a lifetime of ser-
I think Eric might have froze.
Yep, he did.
So I'll, I'll finish for him, so. And I'm Lisa Parker, and I want to welcome all the new, all the new faces. A couple of them are familiar to me, so Justice and Bobby French. And definitely going to miss Debbie and Rayanne and Vicky. I work with them professionally as colleagues and Debbie as an administrator. And then Vicky had her kids, too, just through the years. But having some new people in is going to be a great thing, too. I look forward to coming to these meetings and seeing everybody. And things for the, through the NDEA, right now, everyone's back in school full-time, and a lot of the teachers are beginning all of our end-of-the-year assessments. And things for the through the NDEA. Right now, everyone's back in school full time and a lot of the teachers are beginning all of our end of the year assessments across grade levels from first grade right up, right up through end of the year star testing. And then getting ready for MCAS coming up in the next couple of weeks. It's that word that we were hoping we wouldn't hear this year, but we are and everybody's moving forward and getting ready to have a a great end of the year.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. If if Mr. Ivan's able to get back in, we can go back to him and allow him to finish sharing his thoughts and commentary. Once again, we extend our thanks to you and Mr. Ivan and everybody, all the teachers, all the staff for getting all of our kids back into school. I'm trying to remember, we met what the fifth, no, the 11th. So our kids had been back at the middle and high school for a couple of weeks already. The elementary had already been back for about, what, about four weeks, I think, with the vacation week in between. And I only hear positive things. I hear a lot of parents who are very pleased with having their kids back on a regular routine. You know, the kids are happy to be with their friends. You know, I know my my son as a junior is is very excited to see his friends, more than half of them only twice a week. So, you know, we extend our thanks to everybody for, you know, getting our kids back into the routine and all the hard work that has gone into. I think Dr. Kazvent says pivoting or oscillating, you know, whatever, whatever word you want to use. We truly appreciate what everyone's been able to do. So please send along our thank you. Okay, so next up, we have the FY21 budget status update. There's really, as far as I know, nothing new about the FY21 budget. We are moving forward and this guy will give us some information when we get to the Business Managers Report in just a couple of minutes. But legislatively, you know, it's it's kind of a done deal. And I don't think there's anything Dr. Kazvent for this year that we're really dealing with.
Not not for this fiscal year. Quite frankly, we're just obviously very much in the home stretch. So there's really been no new news, I guess, in regards to the FY21 budget.
So which brings us to FY22 budget, which is where I think we're going to spend a little bit of time this evening. I will just give a quick, the Senate has presented their budget. It is now in committee. There's a, I don't know, I think there's 180 amendments on the floor. There are several of them that are are really pertinent to us. There was one about trying to get the Senate to increase the amount of money appropriated for regional school transportation to at least match the House. If the numbers differ between the House and the Senate, they have to go into reconciliation. So it would be better if we can at least get them to match. So that's kind of where. And if anybody, especially our new members, there is a Facebook group, Support Mass Regional Schools. We've got some really good folks out there who do push a lot of information through. There was a post today about trying to get our legislators on the Senate side, so Senator Gobie, to support and co-sign the bill, the amendment, amendment 160, to push that to be the same amount as the regional, the House's regional transportation. I'm trying to think. I I think they have another week to work through the amendments and then the Senate will present their budget. So with that being said, I am, I'm actually, I see Mr. Ivan has joined us. And I did say I would jump back to you if you were able to come back. If you'd like to finish what you were saying.
Yeah, I heard Lisa Lisa said she finished strong. I just wanted to introduce ourselves. Yeah, my, I guess I phased out into a different parallel universe for a minute there. I don't know what happened. But yeah, I just wanted to say we've we've got a strong tradition of good relationships between the teachers' union and the district leadership. For those that are new, Dr. Casavet and I pretty much speak daily with Lisa and Kate Kalise. We meet weekly. Communication during this pandemic has been constant and necessary. We're all working ourselves, the teachers, I mean, well, and the adminis-, everybody and you guys are working ourselves like crazy to get through this thing, and we're almost through it. And I know, is Callie still there? Congrats to you, five days left as a senior. And she's handling it like a trooper, even though she doesn't have a whole lot left in all her classes. Margaret, I'm sure your son is the same way. Like, what are we, it's like, well, just hold on, we're almost there, guys. But thank you for being a part of the school committee and as we serve, you know, the children of these two great towns, give them an awesome education, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ivan. Those are very kind words and we look forward to, I think, as as this new committee that we formed, you know, continuing those relationships and being as supportive as we can to the initiatives in the district. So thank you. What I will do is now I will turn it over to Dr. Kazvent, who is going to share with us. I I know that there has been many, many hours put into where we're going for FY22, because we do have a budget. But we also have all this grant money. We have learning gaps and remediation and mandates and all these things. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazvent, who's going to fill us in on what the he's come up with with his team as to where we look to go for FY22.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I I appreciate the comment of, there's been a lot of information. So, you know, we've released halfway done. We, the town of Templeton, during their town meeting, passed the the school, the school budget, or for, at least for the Templeton assessment. And we have Phillipston, I think, next Tuesday, if I have my dates correct. I think it's June 2nd. No, am I wrong? I might have my days. It's June 2nd. So so we're halfway there in terms of the local budget. We've, as we've talked about before, you you really can't talk about FY22 budget without bringing in S R 2 and S R 3 into the conversation. As we've discussed in the past, the, you know, we have positions that are being funded through S R 2 for the FY22 year. We know that in in some form, S R 3 monies will also come into play. And because schools are staff intensive, if if we're going to talk about learning gaps, well, that generally means people, teachers, you know, those type of things. So, so again, you know, we escalate quite a bit, in the business office anyway, between these two grants. One is, you know, we signed today, S R 2. And S R 3, as I, you know, as we've learned through meetings with the commissioner and the state, and I had brought up earlier, that it it really requires a convening of a of a stakeholder group to talk about their thoughts in terms of what, where the monies should go, how, you know, how would we best utilize, you know, these funds? And and it's at some point, I believe it's Monday, or I think it's Monday, we'll, we'll absolutely receive, I am told, the actual amount. But we've, we know that it's two and a half times what our S R 2 amounts were. And, you know, we have a pretty good, you know, understanding of that. So, so what have we done? So this year, we, of course, did the general fund budget. So we've, we've, we've tackled that. We're now in the, the process of seeing where we can best utilize, you know, either staff or some type of programming to best meet the needs of kids who may have learning gaps. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts to this. So, you know, you have folks, we're talking about summer school. And we're talking, again, when I say summer school, I'm talking about kids who are not on I E Ps, because that would be extended year. E S Y, which are, you know, in that situation, that that's written into the I E Ps. In some, in in some parliaments, summer school means that it's credit recovery. Maybe you've failed a class at the high school and it's and it's credit bearing and you didn't receive those credits. So we're trying to put this all together in the, in a coherent, you know, well, certainly in a coherent way to to express and to show folks what we, what we think is the, you know, is the best way. But really to identify and wring out every dollar that we can and spend it wisely in that, in that process. So what I would say, what I was, what we were planning to do, I think at first, was to lay out the the framework of that, of the plan. Quite frankly, with MCAS going on at the high school, Mr. Young and his, and his team have been literally straight out. It's, it's been an unbelievable task, just given the COVID rules and all those things to administer MCAS this year. So we never, we, we, I I really did put it on the back burner in, you know, in terms of we need to get through MCAS, especially with the 10th grade. That is, of course, the graduation requirement. So we want to make sure that that's done with fidelity. But what we're going to do is, we're going to start concentrating on these stakeholder groups and probably use the stakeholders that were utilized in the very beginning to return to school plan, which really made up a lot of their student, the school councils. Through the middle school, the high school, and the elementary, I'm utilizing that mechanism to at least satisfy some of those requirements. So ultimately, we are trying to, and we're, and we're, we're close. Quite frankly, we just have to work out a lot of the credit recovery piece. We are working with neighboring school districts to see if there is a way that we can share resources to offer credit bearing, you know, for for credit recovery of for those students who may have failed classes that were credit bearing. And and that's quite a process to do that. So we're, we're reaching out and we're seeing if we can collaborate with that. The other part is, I I feel like you almost have to add, talk about this. And I don't know if it fits into FY22, FY21, depending on what you, but we we have this, this bouncing ball of, you know, the minimum local contribution monies and S R 2 monies being utilized to offset that for at least a year. So, so at first, you know, that was yes, then it was no, then maybe. And so it keeps bouncing back and forth about where, where exactly do the, where, who is going to make a final decision on whether this money was going, you know, could be, should be, will be used. And it's, it's really affecting the regionals, you know, substantially, given that many districts have two and three and four different towns that they may need to speak to, depending on their S R 2 or three monies, you know, etc. So we're still watching that very, very closely. Templeton and and Phillipston voted, their select board, when presented with the opportunity, they accepted those funds. If they, if, if they feel that to undo that, we'll, we'll have to try to figure out what next. And and so we're waiting on that. And I think that's important to update the committee on is that we're still not, we're still not really out of the woods when it comes to really a final answer, unless, Madam Chair, you know something through maybe the mass meeting, pardon me, the the Mars meetings as of late. But we've, we're still receiving information that is still up in the air.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything other than a lot of chatter from the regionals, of course, about, you know, you've put us already, you know, we're already behind. And now we've got budgets that have already been passed in a lot of towns, because most regionals are are smaller towns and their town meetings are in the May timeframe. And there's a lot of, of, I'll use the word anger, because if we presented, like as we have, Templeton and Phillipston with a budget number that that is, doesn't include an amount of money, because it was going to come from S R 2, if the legislature and then the governor ultimately approves a budget that doesn't include that, what does that mean for us? So there's, so there's a lot of people in the same boat, and I know a lot of discussion, but I haven't heard of any movement on it yet. We'll see, because the Senate did include it in their plan. And I guess the governor will ultimately have, I hate to say the last say, but since he can do vetoes and whatnot. So it'll be interesting to see how this plays out.
Absolutely. So we're, we're obviously watching that through our legislative teams and, of course, Mars, etc. So in the end, we we believe that we have the framework of a pretty, pretty thorough plan in terms of really meeting kids where they need, where they're at, and then bringing them forward. You know, it looks very different depending on the schools. I I say this every time, because I think we, every year we go past, you know, the fact that we really only have four elementary teachers per grade. Although we have five assigned, you know, to remind everyone that each one of those teachers at the K 1, 2, 3, 4 level are being funded through, as of this, it'll be S R 2. And, you know, the, otherwise, the numbers will be quite high. So there's, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to keep an eye on and, of course, prioritize as grant monies either, well, certainly as they come in, but as they start to, as they start to sunset. And we almost have to create a list of what, you know, what would go first and what would be last in terms of as the money start to to fade away. So in terms of the FY, your typical, your, just your run-of-the-mill FY22 budget, we've, we've completed that months ago and we're one meeting away from passing that. I I also say that someone had asked me, a member had asked me, you know, what would happen if we, we unfortunately repeat the scenario of a 1/12 budget? I, you know, first off, given what all the, given what our mandate is and our charge in terms of learning gaps and what we need to do, I I really would have to say that we'd probably have to look at summer school. Somebody asked me point blank, what would you, what would you have to do? Well, as we all know, unfortunately, and I don't want to take away summer school or any type of opportunities. That is not, that is not extended school year. E S Y is mandated by the I E P. So first off, that that would stay. So I want to make sure I say that out loud. You know, people will say, well, geez, that's, you know, that's, it's kind of harsh. But as we know, we'd have to revert back to FY22 budget, you know, etc. without. So we're hopeful that June 2nd goes well and that we can put that behind us and really focus on the, you know, on, on the needs of the students, quite frankly, in in assessing and then reacting accordingly to their needs in terms of the learning gaps, if if any.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee at this point? I know that initially we thought we'd have, we were going to have a rush to get this done. So I'm, I'm actually very pleased that the commissioner did say, take a step back, take a deep breath, and really put some good plans in place so that we're not rushing to come up with a solution to maybe problems that either don't exist once we get to the root of things or other issues that we wouldn't be able to address. So I think that's good. But does anyone at this point have any questions or comments? Because I, my, my one question is going to be, so I'll ask it now and then, you know, I know you mentioned stakeholders. So we're going to get our stakeholder groups together. And then this will be worked on through the summer. So I'm assuming that we'll have more information, we'll continue to roll out as things. I know summer school, obviously, we've got to get information prior to the summer to make that happen. And and you said October, it looked like, might be the date for the plan to be in place?
It, it is. And they, I I would not see that this is going to take all summer, because again, there's, there's planning to be done. And, you know, there are some rules around the money, as we've talked about. And whether it be capital projects, and that's certainly not something we want to get into with S R 3 monies for sure, unless they had something specific to do with, well, learning or gaps, you know, that kind of thing. So that, it's actually going to move fairly quickly in terms of getting the stakeholder groups together and having those conversations, because summer is in fact, well, summer. And, you know, getting, you know, getting folks together, although we've, we've got this technology now that we can meet remotely when need to be. But but we're going to, we, we have the bones of the plan. We, we think it's at least the structures of it. But it's about what we want to focus on as we move through and as FY22. But as I've said before, what our plan is, is to move as much money as we can to FY23 to not only sustain what is the most important, you know, or the vital, you know, aspects of of what we're able to do through the grant, but to to help offset any type of fiscal cliff. And that seems to be the, the new buzzword, right? The fiscal cliff, pivoting, you know, all those type of things. But it, it's a real, it's a real, it's a real problem. I mean, we, no one wants to budget with one-time monies. It's, that's, it's, you know, budget 101. But when, as I said at the town meeting on two, for Templeton, we have, we have responsibilities. And so they've given us this money in order to meet these responsibilities. And so we're gonna, it's certainly going to be a wider conversation as we move forward with our partners from both Templeton and Phillips.
Great, thank you. Anyone? Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments at this point on FY22 and the grant funds? They said more, more information will be coming, but I don't see any questions at this point. I'm certain then that at our June 16th meeting, this is probably going to be another topic that we'll delve even, even further into. I just had a couple of, of questions or comments just from running into people and them asking me. And I think we've, we've kind of had this discussion. When we look at summer school, not the extended year program, but if we're able to provide, and I know we're looking, I think we've got it and we're ready to, to move forward. Summer school credit recovery, I know we've got, it's kind of two pieces. We've got more of a credit recovery and then we've got some intervention, I think. I did have someone ask me about specifically about credit recovery. And if we would be offering that. So I just wanted to, to ask for some information and also about, a lot of times, who pays for that and what are our thoughts as of right now? And of course, that could change until we, we get everything nailed down. But if we could just go over that one more time in case someone's listening that needs to hear it.
So thank you, Madam Chair. What we're doing, the answer to the, the, the question of money is that we would like to, our, the plan is to offer it free to students. Now certainly you would have to pay teachers. I mean, of, of course, I think that that's, I mean, I think that's, you know, a given. What we're doing and what we're concerned about. So when talking with our area, you know, we call them the family, but with our area districts is that we, we don't know that we'll have enough teachers necessarily in, in the right areas. So you know, no one is really willing. And by the way, it's also too early. How many, how many students have, have failed for the year X course, this course, that course? But so our thought was that if we combined, you know, resources. So in other words, I'm, I'm going to pick Ash West and they've got a few folks who are, you know, willing, ready and able to teach math. And we've got a few folks who, you know, might want to teach social studies and another group, Gardner's got some folks who, one or two teachers who will teach English. On our own, we wouldn't be able to do very much, right? Because we just, we'd have this in my little story here, only these English teachers and we might have, we need other areas. So we're seeing what we can do and through the Zoom platform, by the way, and, and/or in person if they're local. So in other words, if we're hosting it, then our kids could come to, come to summer school and we could zoom it out. If, again, this is a conversation that we're just, we are just ballparking and with this, these are conversations that need to be talked to through the union and everything else in terms of stipends, all these types of stuff. But, but we're trying to, we're trying to broaden our horizon. The, I guess the last, you know, the last ditch effort is to use Ingenuity, which is you often use for credit recovery. It's a computer-based program, obviously. Folks, we know what Ingenuity is now, you know, two years ago, no, you know, we certainly only had heard of it. Now we're, you know, we're, we're quite familiar. So we're going to try to offer out, but even there, you're not going to be able to offer probably as many or opportunities. So all the districts are trying to offer as many opportunities to their kids, to their students for, certainly for credit recovery that, that they can. Again, we're still gathering, we're still in the gathering information stage. So we're not even, you know, we're not even to the part where I'm going to come before you and say, we'd like to do this. We, we need to see if there's a capacity to do that.
Great, thank you. Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. Any other questions or comments at this point on next year and, and what we're doing based on the information we have? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move forward and we'll go to Ms. Geister with the business manager's report. And if we can get an update on where we are financially, I do want to just bring out that at the June 16th meeting, we will address line item transfers. By law, we have to move monies around in our budget if we are in a negative position at any of our line items. So that's the major, what is it, thousands categories that we use. So Ms. Geister will present us with, with that information in June. But as of right now, if you want to highlight where we are and, and what we look like.
All right. So we'll just start with revolving in grants because there's not too much to say about those. So our grants are winding down. If you, I only get to post it like at four o'clock. So you probably haven't had a chance to look at it, but when you do look at it, you'll see most of them are, there's probably five or six of them that have already been zeroed out and closed out. There's a couple of the federal ones like Title I, Title II that will roll over into next year. Most of that money will be spent on summer school. So those will probably be closed out by September. And the other ones hit salaries. So by the time we hit that end of school year, those will be closed out too. And as far as revolving accounts, there's really not a lot going on with those. Probably the big one to take note of is with the sports kind of kicking in this spring. We've spent some of the athletic revolving fund on those programs like we normally do. But just keep in mind in the back of your head that we've had no revenue going into that account. So that account is going to be a lot less than we're used to seeing when we start off in September. And then for tonight, the real focus that I wanted to talk about was our general fund. And I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at it, but I'm kind of, kind of go through line by line and explain the accounts that are in a deficit and why. And some of them won't be staying that way, but for right now they are. So I'm going to start. First one with a deficit is the school committee line. And the reason why this one's in the red this year is because of the regional agreement committee. There's a cost to having that committee and the school committee is paying for it out of this line item. The next one is the business and finance line, which this covers pretty much anything that happens along the business line in central office. The particular reason that this one's in the red this year is we have added a new module to our payroll software. We just purchased it in April. What it's, that, that new module is going to be an employee self-service module. So we're in implementation stages right now, but hopefully by September, we will have it up and running. And we will, it will allow staff to go in and request their time off electronically. So it'll almost get like an instant approval. Once it goes through the approval process, like it has to go through like the principal and then it has to come down to central office. But it'll be a lot quicker than the paper copies that sit in mailboxes and wait for that mail to move from school to school. So I think that once that is up and running and everyone gets used to it, that'll be a pretty positive thing for the district. There's another, I mean, the attorney fee that is in the red, that consistently seems to keep going in the red, no matter how much money I keep adding to it each year in the budget. A lot of the reason so far why it's in the red is there's been a lot of questions regarding COVID. You know, I mean, that pretty much sums it all up for that one. Moving down into the instructional area. I'm sure you're not surprised, but the classroom teacher line is in the red. And that again, is due to COVID by having to hire interim teachers to help with the social distancing and stuff. Next one is textbooks. We were fortunate with the money that we have not spent this year that we could buy sixth and seventh grade inter literature textbooks for them to move forward. So that's why that shows that it's in the red, because it was a purchase that wasn't originally budgeted, but with the need with all of the remote purchasing this and being able to get the licensing for the software for the remote piece, it was really essential. You'll see on the guidance line, 2710, that's in the red. That's only because the new person, the new BCBA that we hired last fall came in a little bit higher than we had budgeted. If you look line 3200, that one is in the red, 79,000. That one right now, there's a lot of special ed clinical assistance, like the outside providers. There's a lot of their billing. It takes quite a while for them. They're, they're not too good about doing it on a monthly basis. It, there's a lot involved on their end. So that one will probably still end up in the red, but I don't think it will be as high as this. But right now, I'm still like, some of my vendors have only billed through January. So it, it's, it's hard to guess at what that's going to be, but I'm expecting that will go down by the time we hit June. Down in the 4,000s, which is the, pretty much it's the operation of the buildings. You'll see that the heating of the buildings is in the red by 46,000, but I don't anticipate that to be by next month. We, we just had some propane deliveries this week. Hopefully those will be our last, especially with the 80 degree temperatures that keep happening. But we have had some pretty cool nights prior to that. So I don't expect that that will be in the red when we finish, but right now it is. The next one down, the maintenance of buildings. As a lot of you are aware, during the year, we've had a lot of airflow testing done in that testing. Although the air quality and the air movement has been fine. We did a lot of upgrades to make sure that it continues to be that way and that all classrooms have the proper amount of air for the number of kids that are in them. And that is why that is in the red. There's a little bit on the technology infrastructure. And that was because we hired a new director mid-year and whenever you have two people in one salary line in the year, it always goes in the red. All right, employee benefits. That, the reason that that is in, we had a sick time buyback. You know, when people retire, it, it comes out of there. Most of the time we try to budget for it if we know in advance, but sometimes if someone gives you a notice and they leave mid-year, it's just not budgeted. The big one, the insurance, that is in the red only because every year I try to squeeze just one more payment than we have budgeted out of the general fund to just save it from school choice. And hopefully I won't have to do a journal entry at the end of the year. And this particular year, it looks like we'll be able to keep that extra payment on the general fund side rather than having to spend it in school choice where we thought we would have to. And then you'll see on line 5300, the rental leases. I paid two of them off early. We had a small piece of equipment that had like $4,000 left on next year's budget. I paid that off. And we also had a telephone lease that had a few small amounts left to it. And I paid that off early just to help us in the FY22 budget because I knew we would have money left over in this budget for all of the different things that we didn't get to do this year. And as always, if we go down to the 9,000s, both of my tuition lines are in the red, which is usually happens every single year because you just can't plan for what you don't know. So overall, the bottom line at the moment, we have an available budget of 425,000, which is pretty good, pretty good. I expect that once we close out in June, that will go up a little bit higher, but that will be the starting point of next year's E and D. So that's a, that's a lot. So I imagine there's probably a lot of questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Geister? Don't see any out there right now. I know it was a lot to digest. I just, I guess my, my overall commentary, my own thoughts is, is as I mentioned before, next month in June, you'll have a better handle on where we are and we'll move some monies around for line item, any line item adjustments that we may need to make so that we make our budget not be in the red anywhere. Because the state tends to frown upon that. Do you? So we've had some grants that, the S or grants. And I know that I, you know, you've talked about expenses like for the HVAC upgrades and whatnot. I'm, I'm going to ask a leading question because I think I already know the answer. Have we spent every penny of the S or would be the one funding? Okay, so, so whatever else is left that we've put into the general fund either doesn't qualify as a COVID-related expense. Or we've run out of funds at the moment in order to apply them against it?
Correct. So the S or one was paid for the initial testing. So all of the repayers that were done because of the initial testing have come from the general fund. So S or two does allow it, but we've already got that spoken for with the budget shortfall. In S or three, there is, you, you can put it in S or three. The S or three, it just has to be approved by DESI in order to qualify for use through the grant. And there's, they, they keep promising when we see the application, there will be a whole spreadsheet in itself on capital projects over $30,000 if you choose to use your money on that.
They were also, Madam Chair, they were also very quick to let us know that there, there're not going to be a lot of those, you know, approvals unless it, again, I think HVAC might be the one area, but again, there were some, some stories around some, the districts in other states who actually, you know, put turf, our official turf. I mean, so in other words, it, they're, Massachusetts is definitely going to be a lot more stringent, obviously, on these, on these type of projects.
Well, it makes sense. A couple of things that I'm hoping that maybe we can, can see probably more towards after this fiscal year ends. I know we keep talking about the athletic revolving account and the need to, to have utilized some of those funds. Can we look to get a breakdown of what's been in and out of the account? So we can really get a handle on, you know, where we stand, what our issues are, because I know we had approved not charging our own students to go to games. I know we keep talking about, do we need to change that? So I think that that discussion probably needs to happen sooner rather than later, since if, you know, from what I understand, football has its schedule out. So that'll be, you know, end of August, beginning of September timeframe. And, and I, so I think that if maybe we can plan on having a discussion or a deeper dive into that, and we can, might even be able to do a finance subcommittee meeting prior that we can really delve into. Just to take a look and, and set expectations because I think, you know, most everyone knows that I have strong feelings that I, I don't ever want to charge our students to go to a game. But if that's the make or break from us being able to have athletics, obviously we need to address that. And I would also hate to see athletic user fees have to be increased if we can do something different. So if that would be a possibility, I would appreciate that, looking at that. And then the other thing I think that we'll need to see once we close out or come as close as we can to closing out FY21 is an updated look at the school choice account. And I know we're going to talk about school choice in a little bit. But I think that we really need to reset expectations once Emery, you get through, you know, what money is needed to come out of where, so that we know what kind of sunset we may have with school choice. If in fact, you know, the projections that you've put together already remain in play, because I think that's important as we go forward to make our, our financial decisions.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone else at this point? Okay. So I don't see anything. Thank you, Emery, for all of the information. And if, you know, for our new members, especially if you've got any questions on the financial information, you can obviously reach out to Ms. Geister, Dr. Kazavant with any questions and they will, you know, certainly help you try to make some hide nor hair of some of education funding. And then maybe if you learn it, you can explain it to many more people because a lot of us are still struggling with some of the, the end funding questions that are out there. So. All right. So we will move on. Next up on the agenda is our COVID-19 updates. I am going to make a statement here that this is the last time we're actually going to have this line item on the agenda. Going forward, Dr. Kazavant will report out either under budget updates or under his superintendent's report. So unless there is something that, you know, is major that we need to outline as a separate agenda item, we're going to just, you know, we're in business as usual moving forward. We're We're still dealing with, you know, certain things as we have to. But we've really got to just move forward. And um, it, I think removing this from the agenda as is will help us be able to do that. So, Dr. Kazavant, I'll throw it over to you if you've got any, uh, any last updates on, on COVID.
Well, interestingly, um, and thank you, Madam Chair, uh, the, I wanted to talk about user fees. So uh athletic user fees and of course, um, you know, the music and theater user fee. So I think it was three times this year, the, the committee uh was asked to weigh at different times if we were going to waive um user fees. So, and we did. Uh, so if it was fall one, winter one, fall two, uh, I, you know, all the different sports. But we, we did in fact, and for the right reasons, waived the user fees. It's my intention, or at least my uh tonight, is to reinstate user fees for, you know, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And why would I do that today in May? It's, it's because we're, well, we're, as you've just mentioned, the, the fall schedules are, um, they're almost done, right? Or if, if not, they're, they're out or they're close to being done. We want to set the expectation early. We don't want to surprise folks, you know, uh, that, that students sign up for these programs early. They're, they're, they're encouraged to sign up early so we know what we have for participation, busing, that kind of thing. So um, the user fee structure was that, uh, and again, Ms. Geister, if I go astray, I'm sure you'll reel me back in. But um a hundred dollars for um, for athlete, there was a family consideration as well. Fifty-four reduced lunch, uh, students who are qualified for reduced lunch and twenty-five for, for students whom qualified for free lunch. Now, next year, uh, all students, all, all meals will be free. So for the entire school year, um, the reimbursement rate will come per student, but it'll, it'll, it'll be free. But that, you know, and because when we talked about that a little bit today, the, the status um still needs to be updated. So in other words, the government seems, needs to know and for whatever reason, they need to um keep track of those type of things. So we'll, we'd still be able to utilize the same structure as we have over the years. And it, and I do appreciate the comment about looking at athletics and the revolving accounts. And I think that, you know, athletics was one of the few funding sources that, that did not have an opportunity, um, you know, to replace monies that were used. So in other words, you know, uh, the lunch program, again, uh, everything was at the free rate, which, uh, which is, which is fine. In other words, basically we'll balance out. But athletics, actually, we actually spent money athletically and did not take any money in. And again, being that it's a revolving account and much of that, you know, much of what we utilize to pay for transportation, et cetera. And this is, by the way, for the arts and um for athletics, we, we, we depend and rely um on a healthy, um, uh, you know, on budgets, right? Uh, funds, pardon me. So I, I think that that's what I would be asking today because we're gonna start seeing signup soon. Um, and we now have to engage our treasurer to see, you know, to, to get that, that started again. Because, uh, you know, it's, it's done, uh, you know, it's no cash passes hands. Obviously, it's all done electronically. So that would be my, uh, my request tonight, Madam Chair. If um, you know, I'm just moving, uh, moving forward, I certainly could go through the rest of it. I would do it at the end if you'd like, but I thought I'd start there since you brought up user fees.
No, and that's good. And actually, as a committee, we, we, we don't really need to do anything because we've been waiving the user fees as our voting. So they really still are in place, but I think it's an important message to get out to everybody that the intent is to um have those implemented once again. So, you know, we can certainly move forward with that. And obviously, you know, if a recommendation from you comes in, um, that changes at whatever point in time, obviously, just bring it to the committee. So I think we're good with moving forward with that intent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other parts really, when I, when we looked at the list, um, the commissioner reported out today quite frankly, that, you know, the decision to make, for example, no masks while outside, you know, based on the CDC recommendations, I think caught a lot of folks by, by surprise. And I think that, you know, there was certainly no plans for us to make a change um in that area, at least until we got to the school year. But based on, you know, what the, what the governor uh declared a couple of days ago, it certainly has um to a, to a certain effect, has, you know, trickled down into school. So it is in fact, okay and allowable, um, at least according to the state, to uh be without mask when you're outside. And that, then the guidance actually came out like yesterday about the sports. So now you can participate in sports that is outside and there's some, there's some caveats to indoor sports, et cetera. What, what the, what the commissioner said quite frankly is that, you know, whatever the rules, whatever we stick with, with the rules. Because again, they, they've changed quite a bit and the state has either taken the CDC guidelines and have implemented them, or there have been situations where they have not. So I received, you know, calls or questions about, well, the CDC says, so, you know, basically we have to do that. Well, that's not the case. As we know, that it's up to the state. The state interprets what the CDC is saying and, and it, it applies what it wants to, quite frankly. Um, and also, um, I've lost count, Eric, but we've, we've got several hundred MOUs. I'm joking, um, but four, but it seems like one hundred memorandums of agreement. And, you know, so some of these things just can't be arbitrarily changed. Just some of it can, some of it can, does have force of law. I mean, it really starts getting into, and we've been in the, you know, in the mode of making sure that we communicate as much as possible. So he's, what he said today is that he feels that whatever we land on by this, for the school year will be the rules that will follow for summer school. So he's basically saying, look, if it's masked and whatever case may be. He was very clear to say that the rules will change in the fall. Now, he's not gonna go so far as to tell us what, uh, but he did say they're going to change. And he said possibly masking uh will, will, will still be in place. Again, I'm talking about indoors now, I'm going back, yeah. So he's certainly not going to come out and say that it's not going to be. We, we've, we've received guidance that, you know, students can now share materials, like literally share materials. I'm trying to think of some of the other ones. What was some of the other, um, share materials? Oh, boy. So, so these things, we have to
Cleaning, the cleaning schedule.
Cleaning schedule has changed. This has all been, we've, we've bargained all of this. We've discussed this with you. So, you know, Eric and I, Kate, Lisa have to come back and go, okay, flat services now can be cleaned at a certain. So it's not just simply, you know, we just go ahead and make these changes because the CDC and/or the state says so. We, we, we have to have a conversation. So we'll be entering back into that. And, you know, we'll, we'll figure it all out like we have throughout the entire year. But I thought it was interesting, very interesting for him, him to say that the rules will change. And I, and, you know, we're all hopeful, you know, quite frankly, as long as it's safe and it, it meets muster that the six-foot, three-foot rule is relaxed because we are, we are just in every possible space in these schools, um, and are using gyms as cafeterias. And we, we all know what we're doing. But I mean, that's the kind of, I'm kind of hopeful to get some guidance on that. Um, and then we'll go from there. Licensing and the, some of the licensing and certification things that were waived, some of that is, is been will, will sunset on when the emergency, uh, state of emergency ends on June sixteenth. That is, that'll, that will impact some of the folks that we, we have. You know, so ultimately, we know that there's going to, we, well, we've been told that it's going to change. How it's gonna change or what is gonna change, we don't know. But we did plea, we, on bended knee, to make sure that they make these decisions sooner rather than later. Because it has to be messaged out. It has to be discussed. It has to, we, who knows what they're, what we're talking about here, right? But we, we've got to make plans. So I think that in terms of, if I were to cover all things COVID in, in this report, S R three, we've discussed at length, obviously. We, they have signaled, they have signaled a definite rules change, okay? In terms of from what the state has said, um, other rules. And we, we wait with bated breath so that way we can, we can put those, you know, those conversations to the to those, you know, who need to have it and, and who need to make it happen.
Great, thank you. Um, and as I said, that, this will be, unless there's something major that needs to get added as a separate line item for COVID updates, we will fold those into regular updates, either through the superintendent report or a budget report if need be. So any, any questions or comments um that anyone has regarding um any of the COVID uh changes in the rules? Or anything?
Chris, I just got a quick question. Um, actually, I, I think you know I work in higher ed and I have a hard time with the changes going on between the um folks that work here. How do we think the changes are gonna affect the, the students? You know what I mean? Going from no mask to wearing a mask where you still have to wear it inside, where you don't have to wear it inside. How is, I mean, how do we think that's gonna go? Is that gonna go okay? Is it gonna be an easy transition?
Well, so I, I'm gonna say, um, this is a credit to the parents of our community and our kids of our community. I remember sitting there going, there is no way kids are gonna wear their masks. There's no way, no way. We're gonna have problems, although once, once again, adults did not give kids, you know, the benefit of the doubt. And what did they do? In come their masks and I, you know, yes, have we, has it been perfect? Of course not. But if you walked into that elementary school right now, every child has their mask on. I mean, I would defer to Lisa, of course, but uh short of those few problems, those kids wear their masks, but you know, like, hello, you're like, okay. Oh, my gosh, I guess it is an issue. He was very clear, though, to point out that the type of things that we're doing, like graduation, they've split, for example, from the, the higher ed community. Higher ed didn't feel it was ready. Of course, the math, the numbers must be just, you know, just very different. Whereas the guidance that came to us just today on graduation, um, or the updates that, you know, you know, were very, they did not go to higher ed. So I think that they'll handle it, they'll, they'll be fine with whatever we, we, we message out. Although the big, the big ticket item is going to be if I have chosen not to be vaccinated or I am too young to be vaccinated. Really kind of two different things, but how do I, and so everybody can, who's vaccinated can not wear a mask. Well, then we get into issues of, you know, confidentiality, FERPA potentially, what can an employer um require? Will it be different for elementary schools? Because as of right now, if you're below twelve, you don't, you don't receive a vaccine. So does that mean that, you know, elementary teachers have to wear masks, but the middle and high school don't? Because there's a possibility of being vaccinated. So I, I'm not going to fill my head with that right now. But truly, though, that's our next step because colleges, private schools especially, can mandate that. They can say you, you will get a vaccine, um, or bring a note in that you can't, or you're not coming to our college, right? That, that doesn't work in the public sector, obviously. But our kids are very compliant, um, our parents, they understand and they, our parents are honestly MVPs. Because they've made, they've changed, they've had to listen to me change them twenty-eight times during the school year, right? On different levels. So um, our kids will be fine. Uh, I'm confident in them and they'll, and they'll do what, what needs to be done.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Great, great question, Jeff. Uh, any, anybody have anything else? Okay, it looks like not. So we're gonna move on to our next um topic, which is our strategic plan update. And I'm assuming that um Kate, you're probably gonna lead us through this and hopefully share your screen so that we can follow along with the, was it the bouncing ball? And, and hear your update. Just for the benefit of the new committee members, we have, uh, we had put in place back in twenty nineteen, a district strategic plan. A lot of work went into coming up with what our initiatives and objectives would be. And we do uh regular updates throughout the course of the year um on that plan. One of the things, and I'm gonna kind of jump ahead to the next item on the agenda and fold it together, is this feeds directly into the superintendent evaluation, which we are, uh, which we need to do in the month of June. So this will be a real good baseline to get an understanding of where the priorities of the district are, as well as to hear some of the activities that Dr. Kazavant um has undertaken as well, um, which will factor into the evaluation. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. But um with that as the, 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 the background, um, I will turn it over to Dr. Kazavant or straight to Ms. Kalise, either way.
Just a real quick, um, so when, in two thousand and sixteen, when we were looking at, you know, when I came into, into the, uh, the entry audit, one of the areas of need was, you know, strategic plan that, that had some type of, uh, I'll call it meat, but, but certainly identified, that identified some, you know, the areas that we needed to work on. So, you know, we, again, the committee, um, and its stakeholder groups said, and I did a great job. I mean, identified at least is, you know, some very key areas. And so it made sense that if this was important to the community, important to the school committee, important to the state, well, stakeholder uh groups, that this uh should certainly reflect, um, you know, in my evaluation, right? Because this is the charge, one of the charges of the superintendent. So I, I'll leave it at, at that, just that it was a lot of hard work. And, um, and it, it certainly has borne some wonderful, um, not only ideas, but some uh benefits to the district and to the students we serve. And I'll, and certainly, there's no secret that Kate um really is the, the author and the champion of, of this strategic plan. Um, has done a fantastic job, you know, with uh, with managing it.
Thank you. So um I'll share my screen. Why there's?
Do you have access, Kate, to do that, or?
I do, but you know I have a new computer that is not letting me do it.
My go-to is to blame tech as well, Kate, so.
Well, it's letting me share, but then it says I have to change my settings.
How about if I kind of buy sometimes as Kate tries to
Why don't you do that?
To get that, just for a second. So basically, if you have it in front of you, if you print it out, or if you have it, you know, download. We really, uh, how we really position this is that you see April, November and May. We are very um color-coded, happy, we like doing things like that. And, and so, you know, we, we really took off quite quickly. But obviously with COVID, we started to, uh, we started to really lose some ground in terms of completing and hitting timelines. But the interesting thing is that what, um, what the pandemic did is really showed us in some areas that we met, we potentially met some of these goals because of the things that we had to do be, be, because that we were full remote, for example. Especially in the area of technology. And it made us think very differently about, about our goals, especially strategic objective number two. You know, implement a tiered system of support academic and behavior to improve student learning. And three, communicate, develop systems of communication structures. Trust me, we, we were, we were, we were really finding it difficult to um communicate effectively when we didn't have the, we just, again, we were all in our, in our home. So, um, so I've done all I can do, Kate. I, I have to tell you, I, I could, I could tap dance maybe and sing a little bit. But, um, but I don't know where she, oh, well, okay. Oh, look at that.
You are muted, Kate, just so you know.
All right. So you can hear me now and you can see what I'm, I'm showing, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I'm not even like embarrassed about this anymore. It's just part of COVID life, right? So I just want to call attention to the fact that this is the overview, right? This is the shortened version. So if you're a new member on the committee, you uh might want to reference our full plan, which is posted on the website. And the front page really just begins with the mission, vision, core values and theory of action, which of course guide all of the work that we do. And I would just say that it really does. It's not just something that we I would just say that it really does. It's not just something that we say, it really does guide our work. You can see a key up here that we updated in April of 2020 with red, November of 2020 with purple, and now May of 2021 with blue. So we have three strategic objectives, and within those objectives, we have initiatives. So strategic objective one has two strategic initiatives. Strategic objective two has two initiatives and three has one. So as you follow down the columns, you can see that strategic objective one, which is implements, implements standards-based curriculum maps, this is really in place and should now become an ongoing process of review and reflection. That's, that's been, you know, work that, that teachers did a terrific job with. And now it's just gonna be part of a regular cycle. So I think when the time comes to revise this strategic plan, it might drop off or it might be part of ongoing work. So it, it kind of started with ELA and mathematics, moved to history and social science, I would say. There are new maps in place that have been implemented as a result of the changes in the standards in the fall of 2021. I think we could do a little more work on the documentation part of that, but teachers have definitely been using those new standards and teaching to them. And then there's the science curriculum that's scheduled, that was for next year, and that's scheduled to begin this fall. So we're, we're really on track with this first initiative. Sorry, the scrolling might make you dizzy. The second one is implementing research-based instructional prac- practices. And we had a group the year before last, really, that of teachers, that was just an amazing group. We got together, we met and discussed what, what really good instructional practices are. And we married that with our learning walkthroughs, which of course haven't happened this year, but they did happen last year, and I'm hoping moving forward, they happen again. And FOI is focus of inquiry. So we incorporated what we really believed were good instructional practices and the focus of inquiry to kind of move that, that work forward. So the, by the spring, it says they will be implemented. And I would say this is also in place. And I think in some ways, it was accelerated because of COVID. I mean, teachers began the year, were ended last year, you know, having to really shift their instructional practices dramatically, as we've talked about multiple times. And learn new technologies and have Google classrooms and so forth. So I think the shift next year really is going to be going back to being able to have hands-on activities and have students in groups and adapting back to that. Those good instructional practices that we wanted. And even though we're not at the spring of 2022, I, I did really make a comment here that we are nearly at that point with this. So that, that initiative is also on track really well. Do you want me to stop there? Or do you want me to finish before questions?
Let's have you go through it, Kate, and then we'll circle back with questions at the end.
Sure. And then strategic objective two is around a multi-tiered system of support. And we broke this into essentially this third column here is regarding academics. And the fourth column here is the same idea of a multi-tiered system of support around social, emotional, and behavioral needs. And the idea of a multi-tiered system of support is that all students receive core instruction, whether that's academic instruction, social, emotional guidance, behavior expectations. And most students, all students receive that, but most students are successful with just that core instruction. That leaves some students who need some additional support, so we call that tier two or tier three support, in order to meet the expectations, whether they're academic, social, emotional, behavioral. And so we separated this out because there are two pieces, two sides of the same coin. You know, there are similar processes, but, and support each other, but little different lens on them. Mr. Holloway and I taught a course for teachers this spring. I don't even know if that made it on here, but it really should have made it on here. Because teachers need 15 PDPs in, in this, in special ed and differentiation, which is really all what this is about. It was terrific, even though it was by Zoom. I had a teacher yesterday tell me like how, how wonderful they felt the content was and they really enjoyed that. So again, I'm just gonna skip to the 21 part, right? So by spring of 21, we'll have a data cycle of inquiry. Of course, everything that you do in a tiered system of support is driven by data, because you need to teach your core instruction, but then you need to know who's not successful. And in order to know that, you need data. So whether that's data about behavior, social, emotional learning, or academics. You know, we weren't able to have MCAS in the spring of 21, so it limited our progress in this goal, but we did continue to do beginning, middle, and end-of-year STAR assessments. Thank goodness, we have that tool at our disposal now. We're about to, I think we're just starting the end-of-year window for those benchmark assessments. And I think a meeting or two ago, I presented some data on that. So we still have the data from that, but you, you really need multifaceted data. You need to be able to look at the MCAS, look at how students are doing in class, looking at the STAR data and so forth. In order to really have this cycle of inquiry, but we're in a good place, you know, given the constraints we have, we have really moved forward with that. And I would say, again, with the spring of 22, I know that's next year, but we're ahead on this, right? We're really, we have systems and assessments in place to plan and differentiate tier, one, tiers one, two, and three instruction. So that's the academic side. On the behavioral, social, emotional side, we talked about at a previous school meeting, the effect that we implemented the BIMAS survey, which is Behavior Intervention Monitoring Assessment System. And that was something that was a little bit of a lift for teachers to, you know, add to their plate. But it has really resulted in us having a good finger on the pulse of our, our students' social, emotional well-being. And just has been a real asset. So that has really helped with this, with this effort as well. And then the last one is the communication plan, which Dr. Tepson and I have talked about, you know, even as recently as this week, we've done various things in this area. We do have a system of ongoing communication that uses Blackboard Connect, Facebook for positive messages, parent newsletters, and so forth. The district and school handbook has really been improved, as you know, as of last year, and even this year, where there's work ongoing for the handbook to make it more coherent, useful, and accessible to staff and families, which is a huge piece of our communication. We, I think our new tech director as well, we had a conversation today about some data dashboards and so forth that would be great for communication up to the community. So I don't think we're where we want to be necessarily on this, but I think we've made good strides. And I think the pieces are in place that we now have to organize into a plan. So that was a quick
Thank you, Kate. Does anyone have any questions or comments? And I know for our new members, as, as Kate said, the, the full detail plan is out on the website. So I would recommend that you spend some time going through so you can really get into the meat of what that is. But anyone have any questions? I think, Jen, did I see that your hand was up? If you, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of questions. My first question is on the STAR assessments. I'm familiar with them because my son takes them. How, if at all, are parents included in reviewing those results with teachers? Or is this really just for assessing the overall performance of the grade? I saw your presentation a couple committee meetings ago, but I'm wondering to what degree are parents involved in understanding how, you know, the, their individual child's performance on those STAR assessments?
I think that's a terrific question. So first, I would say it's the level, the level of data that I presented at school committee around grade level performance and so forth is kind of one view of it, but really the usefulness of it is that classroom teachers can look at each individual student and they can see where their gaps are, where their strengths are, and they can differentiate instruction based on that. We look at the beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year, so we can see our students on a trajectory to make the proper growth at their grade level. And that, that growth is, is, you know, it relies on teachers using the data and making those differentiated, having those differentiated practices in their classroom. I think we can do a better job of communicating it to parents. It's not something that we include, you know, as part of a report card or send it home or whatever, but certainly if a parent is concerned about a student's progress or wants a snapshot, we can print a parent report of their student's results. It's not something we do systematically right now. So I think that's something that, that we can work on, but it, there's, it's certainly data that could be shared, obviously, with your own child through STAR. I think I could, I'm pretty certain there's already built-in parent report. Sometimes that data is used. So I talked about using it in a multi-tiered system of support, where we're seeing, you know, is, is Kate doing well enough with just classroom instruction or does she need some additional instruction? But in, within regular education, but it can also be used if a student is, you know, being looked at for possibly going on an IEP and so forth. We can see what kinds of, what kinds of interventions we've put in place and have they been working and so forth. So the data can be used by teachers and teams of teachers in lots of great ways. And that's really what we've been focusing on. Is this our second year with it? I think it's our second year. So we had one solid year under our belt and then COVID hit. So I think the parent piece is something we can look to explore for further.
Yeah, excellent. That would, that would be great, because it's, it's really interesting what I see in the school committees, but it's not something that, as a parent, I've had much conversation with the teachers about, so.
Sure. So you could definitely email your, your teacher and say, you know, is there a parent report you can provide to me? And they can always reach out to me if that's not something they know how to generate.
Excellent. Great. And then my second question was about the, more about the strategic plan overall. And what I was curious about is at what point does any of those individual initiatives, does it become just standard operating procedure, at which point you, you sort of reevaluate the strategic plan and maybe make an amendment or a change or an update to focus on something new? And I'm just curious as to what does that look like?
Yeah, that's another great question. So this plan was a three-year plan. Before we put this plan in place, I don't think, and I don't want to really talk too much about the past that I, where I wasn't here, but I don't think we had really a solid strategic plan in place prior to that. So you, you saw that as I was going through, especially the curriculum stuff, like we've got that down. It, it should be part of our cycle of the work that we do, but it doesn't necessarily need to be in a strategic plan moving forward. So next year will be the time when it'll be the last year of this plan where we'll really need to look at, okay, you know, I think we're making really good progress, frankly. And what do we want to keep in place? And, and what do we want to push further? And what might new initiatives be? So we'll probably have to recycle that process. But I would add that another aspect of it is that we also have really good quality school improvement plans that we, we ran through a process two years ago to take what the work that had been done at schools and teachers looked at that in light of our strategic plan and made tweaks and adapted their school improvement plans so that all of our work is moving in the same direction in the district. And, you know, that's also something, not that, you know, we're not going to say this forever, but it is, it has been a challenge with COVID, but schools have made good progress as well. And those are annual. So they kind of adapt annually. But I, I think you're correct that some initiatives will continue and some will drop off, and that'll be part of the group work.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great, good questions. Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone else have any, any questions? I just, I just want to add a comment to kind of what Kate said. I think one of the challenges since the STAR data, really, this is year two. The teachers, without doing conferences, because we couldn't really have them, have had limited time to really take that information and have a structured event like a conference to be able to present it. So hopefully, to your point, Jennifer, to use that and, and bring it more to the attention to the parents, so that they can understand it's not just MCAS scores, and it's not just a test score. We have these other benchmarks. And I, I remember, and I'm, and I'm, when Kate, when you shared with us, I think it was at an academic subcommittee meeting, how you had data aligned to look at the different things. And, and I remember it was, you know, Mrs. Kozel, Mrs. Trufolo, and myself in that subcommittee. And like, we were all like, the lights and the, the hearts came out of our eyes. A lot of really good data to triangulate information. Exciting it would be to have everybody be able to take all those pieces and use it. So, you know, kudos to, to yourself, Kate, and, and the team that put all that together. And I'm thinking that we probably need to do another presentation with the new members. And maybe, you know, in the next, you know, several meetings, a few meetings down the road, we can really take a look at that and you can kind of show, you know, what that looks like at that high level to see just how we look at the data, because I don't think people truly understand the complexity of, of how all those things work together.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And if I could just add, what you're referencing really is so important, because we never want to make decisions based on one data point. So we take STAR data, we put it beside MCAS. MCAS is a snapshot, really. It's, it's got value, but it's limited value. We put that beside STAR, we put that beside classroom teacher, knowledge of the student, we put that beside their classroom grade, Fuentes and Pennell in the younger grades and other assessments. And then we have a picture. And often, and you can, in some cases, even do a correlation coefficient and see how correlated they are. And sometimes, you know, they're not, and that might call your attention to, well, how come a student did so well here, but didn't do well here? So it really is all about the conversation about the data. But I did want to say that I think, and maybe Eric can confirm this, I think this was the first year we did it at nine through 12.
Yes.
Right? So now we have this data K to 12. Did we do it last year? I don't think we did.
No, but our last, our last of the three is June 7. We're gonna do that in three parts. We do our third one, June 7.
Right. So we now have this STAR K through 12, and the nine through 12 piece is new this year. And we have something called STAR Customs, so we can go beyond just what the benchmarks are and really explore deeply into standards. I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you, Kate. Anyone else have any questions or comments? I just think the only comment that I would just like to add is, you know, I know that next year we'll, we'll relook at the strategic plan and craft the next, you know, go-around for the, the following three years. I think it's important to note, though, that, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, learning loss, remediated learning, whatever you want to call it. And that we probably need to factor in, you know, what, what impact will it have on a strategic plan moving forward? And what have we learned from having to do this that, that can be incorporated? Because I think it really struck me when you were talking about, you know, the teachers needed to accelerate some of these steps, just because, which, you know, you know, trial by fire, I guess, comes to mind. And, and they really stepped up and were. And, and they really stepped up and were able to do these. So I'll be interested to see how we're able to take some of these things that we've learned and really parlay them into strategic initiatives. How do we use edgenuity to maybe help with some of those, the MTSS items and things? So I'm, I'm looking for questions on those. So, thank you. Okay. Next. All right, so next up is superintendent evaluation. I did kind of speak to that. The strategic plan feeds into that. The, the next thing that happens, and I'm going to apologize, Dr. Kazimov, because I know we spoke, but I, we, I, I never really got into too much detail because we got off on a tangent. You have a document that you update with, you know, all of the evidence. So that's what I was looking for, to all of the objectives. And I don't know if that had been updated. I don't think it has, although a lot of it is included in the strategic plan. So I'll circle back with you in the next week. And we could talk about getting that updated so that we'll have that document along with the actual evaluation form that can be sent out to the committee. And I, I will say, you know, with the new members, it's going to be difficult because obviously you haven't had day-to-day interaction. What I think, you know, we probably would like to see is more commentary than maybe ratings and things. And there's a lot of information that goes along. So I'll be sure to share with you. If you've got nothing to do, there's probably a 60-page document from Desi all about evaluating the superintendent. You can certainly grab that. I know, Chris, you certainly spend a lot of time reading that to get to sleep at night. So, but we'll, you'll get more information from me for the June meeting on that and, and some of the intricacies that, that we're bound to with open meeting law and some other things for the evaluation. Anything you want to add to that?
I would just, that we're, all that information is in Teach Point or will be updated. And the teachers certainly know that's the evaluative tool that there's used. So without going into all this detail, what's going to happen is that in a week or so, we're going to train you, Margaret, because you, you are identified as my supervisor, right? My raider. So you'll, we'll, we'll get into that and it'll, it'll all lay out very, very nicely. Teach Point is, is a pretty good program and it's, it's fairly easy to use. But, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that and how that can be presented and used with the committee.
Perfect, yeah. And, and from the committee perspective, we do individual evaluations. We'll summarize it all together and we do a combined evaluation presentation that will be done in open meeting to the public. So that's kind of the, the quick overview of the process. So just a heads up, that's coming up and we'll be dealing with that shortly. Next up, school committee comments. Anybody have anything else to add that they'd like to comment on? I don't see anyone. I did just want to do another shout out to our senior class who are winding down with only a few days left of academics and they've got all sorts of, of events coming up. Congratulations for making it this far. And I think I can speak for the committee that we're really proud of the class of 2021 for persevering through a year that certainly was not any bit of what the expected year looked like. So again, we'll, we'll do a recap after at our next meeting of, of how things went. But just a big shout out to the class and congratulations in advance of graduation. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Yes, Bobby?
Margaret, I'm just, I'm just curious. Like, I know last year the, the seniors had the parade because, you know, that they came through town because, you know, they did that in lieu of with everything with COVID. I didn't, I just thought that that was a nice way to get the community to celebrate our seniors. I didn't know if there'd been any talk or suggestions of continuing that as more of now like a graduating tradition.
I think the, we presented the listing of events and the carp parade was on there. I think it's scheduled maybe for sometime next week. I haven't seen any further information on it and I don't know if we have. But maybe if, if Dr. Kazimov, you or someone on, on the team can maybe get a little more information, shoot it out now to the entire committee again, especially with the new members who don't have that right at their fingertips like we did.
Yeah, also I will share with them the Google Drives that has a lot of this information that we're talking about in it. So you guys have access to all those things as well.
Great, thank you, Susan. A good, good question, Bobby. I, I know that they tried to take a lot of the things that worked really well from last year and continue them forward. And that corp parade was definitely one of them. It was, I was driving my daughter who graduated last year and it was just, it was, as you said, the community coming out. It was, it was just wonderful. So I'm hoping they can get that done and, and, you know, we can all be out there to cheer them on. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go into surplus items. We do have a list of surplus items. I'm going to read through them real quickly and then I would entertain a motion to surplus the items that I have read. So we've got 60 copies of Julius Caesar Parallel Text, 17 copies of Julius Caesar Dover Thrift Edition Unabridged, 24 copies of Julius Caesar A Parallel Text Second Edition, six copies of Julius Caesar Side by Side, 39 copies of Retold Classic Myths Volume One, 16 copies of Retold Classic Myths Volume Two, five copies of Julius Caesar Folger, four copies of Edith Wharton Ethan Frome, five copies of The Old Man in the Sea, one copy of Mythology, one copy of The Pearl, one copy of Retold Classic Myths Volume Three, 61 copies of Macbeth Parallel Text, 11 copies of Macbeth in the original and modern English, 63 copies of Knight Bantam Books Edition, 18 copies of Heroes, 55 copies of Things Fall Apart, 23 copies of Knight, 95 copies of To Kill a Mockingbird. All the details with the ISBN are included on the agenda if anyone wanted to go and reference those. Having now read them, I would entertain a motion to surplus those items as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mrs. Matson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from, I'll say Mr. Marks because he was louder. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments on those, on that motion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So those items are surplus and they'll follow the surplus procedure that we have in place. Thank you for bringing those up. And let's see. I do not have any items that were reasonably anticipated within 40 hours before the meeting, 48 hours, I'm sorry, before the meeting. We'll go on to our superintendent report and we'll consolidate to several different things. One of the things that I know that we have to address tonight is enrollment and school choice. And I think Dr. Kazimov, you'll probably have a recommendation for us since we've got to get some information out to the public on that. So I will turn it over to you for that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of quick items of note that on the, the next, the last half day, which is the, the 20, oh gosh, 8th, Susan, is it 28th, the 27th, 28th? We will be hosting a vaccine clinic for students whom, of course, have the permissions from their parents and other community members. On that information went out, just the high school students, obviously 12 and older. We have close to 85 or 90 students whose parents signed them up for that. So we'll be working in conjunction with Haywood Hospital and that information has been, has been disseminated. And as it goes through, I'll, I'll update the committee. Again, we, we're just trying to see what the numbers are. So, so in terms of just consolidating the, the, the rest of the agenda items, in terms of school choice, so we've, we've talked a lot about school choice for, for years, but certainly in the last couple of months. And what we, what we landed on, quite frankly, was the fact that, one, we know in the current configuration that, that there isn't much space physical at this point at the elementary K through 4. But we are presented on literally every year when someone is here and then moves mid-year. And, and so we have, they actually have to leave the district at some point, whenever the easiest time is to leave, if there's an opportunity. What I would suggest, I'm just talking about the elementary at this point, is that we, we utilize what I'm going to call, although not legally, but the, you know, it's not in the definition below, but honestly have a waitlist. Because we do, we do have folks whom want to be, at least have the option at some point if in fact enrollment should shift and it could. I don't know what we're going to be like in July or August, but if we were to keep numbers at the same number, at the same level, pardon me, that, that would be an opportunity for either a school choice student or for a student who moved and then, then could be considered school choice because then going through the process, which is laid out here, which I won't go through, that would at least give the opportunity to those, to those children who, and was well over 30 kids this year who moved mid-year. And we just could not keep them because there's no longer school choice in place, et cetera. And again, we've talked about that ad nauseam. Okay, so that would be certainly in, in, within the confines of what the law allows or the statute allows, that's what I would recommend for the elementary level. In terms of the middle and high school, we do have more opportunities. We do have space. It, it's varying. And so in speaking with the middle school, that up into 120 students per grade, so that'd be five, six, and seven, you know? And we would, we would cap that at 120, using the same analogy that we would of course wait until July and August. We're going to get through this year first to see. And in terms of the high school, there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, although we have more kids now entering the high school from, from the feeder, which is our middle school. So, so it's not, it's not as, you know, we're long gone, I hope, are the classes of 50 in low 60s. We're looking at more of 80s and 90s and who knows, you know, you know, moving forward if it could be higher. So it would be in fact the same, the, the same configuration of 120 for the eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. The 11th and 12th grade, by this point, we were pretty, you know, either we're pretty full or programming, programmatically, it doesn't make, make sense because to take X amount of credits or if they had a direction, it just sometimes does not work out as well. And plus, we don't, we don't want to overfill those classrooms anyway or those specialty classes such as, I'm trying to think now off the top of my head, but maybe chemistry or AP something. Okay, I'm trying to think of some of the classes that we have, we don't want to overfill. So any, in, in the event, we've talked about this before. It's, I, I would, I would say formally that it's my, the formal request, quite frankly, to consider approving what we've been, you know, bouncing about for the last, I don't know, two or three months.
Okay, so just to make sure I am understanding. So we're really not in a position as of today to announce how many spots we have in any particular grades because what we need to do is understand who may have moved out of the district and how many open seats we may actually have. And that probably won't happen until July, August timeframe.
I, I would say that for the elementary. The elementary is, is, that's where we have the most, you know, the, the most kids, quite frankly. It's at the middle and high school that I would say, Madam Chair, that we have the opportunity now to do exactly as I very quickly explained. And I realize it was, you know, in haste. But we know that, that 120 is our max regardless. And that is, and that is something that we could make available as, as soon as, you know, either possible or legally possible. It's the elementary that I want to pump the brakes on, quite frankly, because it's those numbers that we have the most homeschooled students who've already indicated they're going to come back, those type of things. And I, I, you know, that's, it just bears to wait, wait that out for a month or so just, you know, for folks to declare whether or not they're going to be back or not, or not.
All right, so do we want to have you come back in June? Because the policy and procedure is that by the end of the school year, no later than July 1st, we'll do our first lottery drawing. So would it make sense if in June you presented the, the committee with your, I guess we'll call them firm numbers, that we can take people in this grade and seven spots in that grade? They'll give you another month to get data together. Then we can vote on that. I think that, that might make sense if any, anyone in the committee, does that sound good? Or anyone have any other ideas? This is such a fluid year with our, our, with the COVID, you know, with the homeschooling and whatnot. I think an, an extra month should give us a lot better data because I'd hate to go up to 120 and find out that, well, it's now 135 because we didn't have more, more students move back.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's plan on in June then. We will do our official vote so that we can do our first lottery drawing for, I'll say by July 1st, but we'll figure out the date. Just for the public's information, I believe our portal is open. So if anyone is interested in being put on the list for school choice, they can go out to the website and find the portal and sign up, sign their student up and ask for all the pertinent information. The process would then be if in fact we had say 10 seats open in a particular grade and there's 10 or less students looking to be placed, they would all get in. If there are more than say the 10, we would actually do a lottery and it would be a random drawing. So it's not in order, the order that you signed up. It is really a, a random lottery. So we'll take care and we'll announce all the particulars after we vote on how that will be handled and on what date exactly the drawing will occur. So, all right, great, thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments about, you know, school choice at this point? I know we, we always seem to talk it to death, but it is so important. Okay, seeing none, and thanks everyone for kind of hanging in. This has been a long meeting so far. So thank you. We still have a little bit more to go, but Dr. Kazimov, did you have anything else to, to add? I, I know we keep the regional agreement amendment committee on, on here. Is there any updates at this point or they're just working?
There's, so we're still, I believe we have a meeting in the next week or so. And then again, we're still progressing. There's nothing really to report in that matter. I do want to say that for the, our new members, the new members of the, the committee that certainly welcome and look forward to speaking with you at your convenience. Susan will be reaching out to see if there's any time that's available, you know, that you have available to come just meet me and, you know, just ask any questions. And certainly we can, can talk about all kinds of different things. So there's no, there's not usually a lot of takers, but, but I, I certainly want to offer that and welcome, welcome each of you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we had a report on grants. Kate was actually prompted to kind of steal the thunder on this one at our last meeting, but it was so significant. I'd just like you to, to announce once again our, the grants on Project Lead the Way and anything else significant because it's really great news that I want more people to hear and know all the good work that we're doing in this district.
Thank you. So we received a $75,000 biomedical pathway grant through Project Lead the Way. We're very, very excited about this. Mrs. Duplessis is going to be trained in the first course this summer and we're going to add it. We have already added it to our program studies and will add, be adding sections of that. We expect that biomedical pathway to grow into three or four courses that students will be able to take that culminate in some really exceptional opportunities for them. With that $75,000 and the other grants we've received for the elementary school, the middle school, and previous grants for the high school, our total for Project Lead the Way STEM work is almost $170,000 of grants that we've received. We're one of minority of school districts across the state that have pre-K through 12 programming in STEM through Project Lead the Way. And it really is just thanks to the wonderful work that the teachers have done, embracing the program, really, you know, getting kids excited about it. The teachers are excited about it because it just teaches through this process of activity problem project that is just very engaging for students and very real life. So we're now, we now have, at the high school, three pathways. We have engineering, we have computer science, and now we have biomedical science. So it just is really good news.
Great, thank you. It's very exciting and, and thank you to you and everyone in the district who have, have embraced this, this project, Lead the Way. And I, I'm, I'm going to just kind of parrot what Dr. Kazimov said, you know, that we are looked upon as a district with credibility and being asked for input. And I believe that you've been on some panels yourself, Kate, and that speaks miles for the work that the district and that speaks miles for the work that the district has done. So it's very exciting um that we're able to offer these classes. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, the, one of the grant requirements is that you have to participate in a this grant receivers conference, and that was last week. And I was asked to be on the panel to, you know, talk to new grant recipients. So um, the the district has really um excelled in this. It's it's been great.
Great. Thank you. All right. Um, with that being said, um, we have subcommittee reports. There's really nothing new at the subcommittee level. We'll hold off on a second reading and adoption of the policies because I want the new members to have a chance to um to review them. But for the most part, these policies, it's it's a language thing. It took his and hers and made it theirs or whatever. Um, but I do want to give some time for that since you'll be voting on those. Um, the only subcommittee that maybe we could get an update on would be facilities, because I believe you mentioned that we were um starting to meet on um the facility, the new facilities director uh that we need to hire, since Mr. Moulton has decided um and we reluctantly have allowed him to um decide to retire. Um, but if you want to give us an update on on what's going on with that.
Um, so the the hiring committee uh met with candidates uh, I think a couple of days ago now um at this point and have whittled the finalists down to two um and two, and uh Ms. Varney has already reached out to those uh finalists and will um uh then they'll meet with with myself and um hopefully make a decision.
Great. Sounds like we're moving along and that's good. Um, although we can't agree to let Mr. Moulton go completely, we we still need him. We we still want all of those emergency calls in the middle of the night to go to his phone. So just let him know that that was part of the 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 severance package he got for retiring.
We have let him know on multiple occasions how selfish he is to want to spend time with his wife. And um that has been duly noted.
Great. Thank you. All right. Um, and then just the last subcommittee, the Templeton Elementary School Building Committee. I believe that we are almost almost done? Hank, you're muted if you're talking.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we're done uh for the most part. I think there's, the the state still has to finish its audit, so. Other than that, we're done. Hopefully uh it'll be full in September, the kids.
Excellent. Um, just out of curiosity, and I'm not sure if um if the town of Templeton, I'm sure they're probably on it. I believe that this committee was created by warrant action. So my guess is, once it's done, it will need to be disbanded by a a warrant article as well. So we may just want to, at some point, um, bring that up to uh the folks over in Templeton to make sure that maybe maybe if it's ready for September. If not, it'll be probably next year. Um, but that will, that will make a lot of people smile with the the hard work that has gone in over so many years to get that project done. So. Excellent. Um, there is no correspondence that I'm aware of, and we did say we would just revisit when our next meeting is. Dr. Kazim, any change in your thought based on what we've been able to go over tonight about uh the June second meeting? Are we still good if we don't have that at this point?
Um, I would think yes. Um, I again, executive session, it doesn't necessarily have to happen tonight. I know that that was something that we had just, you know, that was, it was on the table. Um, I think actually after the second or of the first, let's put it this way, after the first week of June would be probably be better um to have that conversation. Um, I I might have some more information to share. Um, but I think that we've, again, I'm looking at all of it. I think, other than the, I guess, the evaluation, but um and school choice, I can't think of any to-do items, and I'm looking to both Enri and Susan and Kate, of course, but I don't I I can't seem, other than report out um on the typical, you know, day-to-day operational stuff. I can't think of anything.
Okay. If that changes, obviously, we'll reach out to the committee and and let everyone know if we do need to have some sort of meeting for any reason. But otherwise, we will then plan on our next meeting being, it would be the sixteenth of June. Um, we'll continue at five thirty. Um, as Dr. Kazim said, we did initially have executive session on the agenda for this evening. Um, I'm going to recommend we pass over that since it really is a new update for the new members of the committee. Um, if and when you meet with Dr. Kazim, um, that is certainly something he can update you individually on, and it may even be better that way because it it's sometimes it's easier and um, especially if you might do a face-to-face. Um, it, you think of more questions while you're sitting there. So um we'll plan on having a full-blown discussion in executive session on those items, though, at our next meeting on the sixteenth. So if nobody has anything else, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion from Mrs. Matson. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from, was that Mrs. French?
It was.
All right. Okay, since that is not an arguable motion, um before uh I will do a roll call vote, Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. French?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Aye.
Mr. Mason? Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And before I I give my vote, uh because I don't think anyone's ever voted negatively on one of these motions, um, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Again, welcome to our new members. Um, reach out if you've got any questions. Thank you to the public who is able to um watch us live or who will go back and watch this. Um, and if anyone has any questions or comments, obviously, Dr. Kazim is always willing to field those and have a wonderful evening because Mrs. Hughes votes yes, which was unanimous, and we are now adjourned. So thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Everyone.